Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the notice of public hearing on the prescribed fees for fire marshal permits and inspections to order. Those who can, please rise.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the notice that Town of Eastlime, Notice of Public Hearing, Eastlime Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niana, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastlime Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April 19, 2023, at the Eastlime Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niana, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM. To receive comments regarding the following ordinance entitled Ordinance Prescribing Fees for Fire Marshal Permits and Inspection. Said ordinance proposes the issuance of permits and the imposition of fees by the Fire Marshal's office when conducting state mandated annual inspections of certain businesses and the review of construction plans and structures within the town. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available for the review in the Eastlime Town Hall Clerk's Office and on the Town of Eastlime website, www.eastlaimetownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, on the 5th day of April, 2023, Eastlime Board of Selectmen. Is there any member here that would like to speak regarding the establishment into the ordinance? Hearing done, I'll attain a motion to close the public hearing on the ordinance prescribing fees for fire marshal permits and inspections.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll open the public hearing regarding the ordinance prescribing fees for building and demolition permits. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastlime Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, April 19, 2023, at the Eastlime Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niana, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM. To receive comments regarding the following proposed amendment to the 150.015 ordinance prescribing fees for building and demolition permits. Said amendment places evaluation method for calculating building permit fees and demolition permits. Copies of the proposed amendment are available for review in the Eastlime Town Clerk's Office and the Eastlime Town of Eastlime website, www.eastlaimetownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, on the 5th day of April, 2023, Board of Selectmen. Is there any member of the public that would like to be heard? Seeing none, I'll attain an inter- a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the ordinance prescribing fees for building and demolition permits.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we will proceed to our regular agenda. Actually, moved that the public hearings be closed? We did that because we did each one separately, right? Okay. Are there any additional? I don't believe there are any additional consent urgent items. So move on to the approval of minutes of the April 5, 2023 meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So moved to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 5, 2023, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, corrections?
Yeah, page five, the second one from the bottom, when we talked about, second one from the top, I'm sorry. When we talked about moving the approval to the first selectman instead of the board of selectmen, it said I disagreed and I thought I agreed. I would agree, I wouldn't disagree.
No, I believe you did agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was up, sir?
Page five, the second statement from the top, Mr. Siri said he would want to have to go before the board of selectmen to hold it for a bit.
It's a double name.
But it says he doesn't disagree.
Doesn't disagree, which means agree.
So he doesn't disagree.
Okay.
You're good. Okay, okay.
Just semantics.
Well, yeah, that does it. Two negative is equal a positive, sorry.
Then I would like to edit my edit.
Okay.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay. Other comments?
I'd just like to say that in review, after our discussion of the use of the ARC funds, as I went down through the list again, I really was impressed with the list, and I feel that these are things that benefit the entire town, as opposed to some of the other grants that we've given that just really benefited more individual efforts. So I think we did a great job.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, cautions, and now moving on to the consent agenda?
Consent calendar, moved to approve the consent calendar for April 19, 2023, the Board of Selectmen meeting in the amount of $4,489.10.
Second, second by Roseanne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. You can tell we've moved away from the residential tax payments because the refunds are much lower now, usually in the case of vehicles. Okay, at this point in time, we'll move up the agenda up to skip up to 3A for new business. Mr. Curry, if you'd come up with your presentation to the, give us your name, address, and your affiliation as a member of the pension board, and then walk us through the document here so that the board will have a much better idea.
My name is Bob Curry. I live at 28 Brainerd Road, and I've been a member of the pension board for about a year now. And I'm just going to give you a recap of how the pension board works and how it's going to affect the budget this year and future years, and what we can do to help stabilize the payments. So the first thing I'm going to do is discuss how the pension plan operates. It's a defined benefit pension plan, and that means that the employees are guaranteed a pension benefit while the town takes all the risk on the investments, as opposed to a 457 or a 403B or a 401K, where the employee takes the risk of the financial risk on the future benefits. The pension plan covers police, fire, non-management town employees, and board of ed, non-teacher employees. And there's 275 lives participating right now, and that includes both employees and retired employees. And the actuaries determine the annual contribution rate to the plan, and that is done through a number of different things. The first thing is, we have to figure out how much we are going to have to pay in the future, and that is done by estimating, and we use a discount rate. Currently, we're at 6.5%, and tonight, we're going to go through proposals that show 6.5% discount and a 6% discount. Moody's is recommending a 6% discount, but they're always usually ahead of the curve on that. They want it done before most people end up doing it. So anyway, and what we're going to do is, the mortality table changes usually every 10 years, and the planned amendments change every 10 years. And right now, we need to have the plan rewritten because it hasn't been done, I think it was 2007 or 2008. So the pension board is looking at that.
Right, we're looking, they're looking at, that'll involve retaining a law from too much to do that, so.
Right. Okay. Then we have the investment earnings, and so the plan was fully funded in January 1, 2022, at $33 million. But the assets dropped to $25 million, and right now, as of the end of February, they're up to $27 million. So what we're going to do is, the handout that you have, we're going to start on page two. And what we're going to do is, we're going to assume that the return on assets is 6.5%, using a discount rate of 6.5%. So we're going to use, if we lower the discount rate, that means the town has to pay more as an employer share. That's just how it works. So we're going to do 6.5% using the 6.5% discount rate. We're also going to look at 3.5% and a zero return on assets. So first, the 6.5% discount rate is what we're going to owe. The return on assets is how we're going to pay for it, and if we don't have enough on the return on assets, the town has to contribute more. Okay? Then if you go, I'm going to just skip over that and then go to page eight, I'm sorry, seven, and we're going to do the same thing, assuming a 6% return on assets for a 6% discount rate. Okay? And we're going to do the same thing, and then if you follow through onto page, it's all summarized toward the back here. Okay, page appendix three. It's the second to the last page. Okay. This is our discount rate of 6.5% that we're currently using, and the first column is what the employer contribution is, so that would be the town contribution. And we have three scenarios here. A 6.5% return on assets to pay for the benefits, or a 3.5% and a zero return. So you can see for 22 and 23, the numbers are all fixed. If you go to 24, which is the budget you're doing coming up, ending in fiscal '24, using the 6%, it could go up to 7.45. If you use 3.5% return, it could be 7.81, and if you use a zero return, it could be $983,000 that the town pays. Okay? The employee contribution is only from the police department, and none of the other employees contribute toward the pension. However, the police department has doubled the benefit of all the other, the regular pension plan for employees, board of ed, library, water, sewer. Okay? Then if you flip the page, this is going to be a 6% discount rate, and we're going to use a 6% return, which means in '24, the town's contribution could go up to $1,000, $1,058,000. It would go up, if we used a 3% return, it would go up to almost 1.1 million in '24. And if we used a zero return, it would go up to 1.25 million. Now, the way this works is, when we have a loss like this, currently, we amortize it over five years. We're looking at amortizing over 10 years so that we can smooth out the jumps in the employer contribution. And that's where we stand right now. See if I got anything else. Yeah, that's on page 11. You can see if we switch to a, you'll see how the 10-year amortization is the black bar, and it does not go up as much as the five-year amortization. Does everyone see that on page 11, right on the bottom? Okay, and that's, so we're working on trying to keep the employer contribution to a minimum.
Right. This, yeah, and to Bob and the other members of the committee, I mean, it was formal, we formalized this probably about a year ago, made it an actual board, so they actually had to come back and report to us. And when you listen to Bob, John Woller, Denise, Mariana, the people on that talking about this, it's amazing the perspective they bring to it. We'll have the fiduciant, I mean, the actuary give a presentation at the beginning. They're a little more, we
Number orientated.
Yeah. The fiduciant was very comfortable with us keeping it at 6.5 for right now. One of the things that board did last year is, they sort of did a preemptive. When everybody else was at 7 or 7.25%, they backed it down to 7, up to 6.5
6.5.
6.5%, which has made it to the point where now we're still in, I believe, in the 90th percentile statewide as far as the funding of our pension board, our pension funds. So there's a feeling that we're in good shape here, and they'll be meeting next month to decide whether to keep it at 6.5 or move it to 6. And you can see that will have an impact on, you know, contributions from the budget. But it's a really, it's an impressive, to listen to them talk, especially when the actuary and fiduciant are talking and so forth with our funds, and how they're invested and so forth like that, and the manner which it's done. We have some in, well, Bob, maybe I might describe where, how, where most of the funds are invested and so forth.
Well, what happens is, we've hired fiduciant to run our investments, and what they do, I believe they have seven or eight different investment managers, and they watch them and they grade them, and they put them on watch if they're not doing, if they're not meeting the benchmarks of their asset class. So we have one on watch right now.
Right.
So they do do a good job. I've worked with them in the past for quite a few years.
And then I see is, everyone on this board, Bob included, has a good finance background. And we do have one town employee on it, so it has the employee's perspective as well. You know, not the intense finance, but someone who can bring that
And the board of ed business manager is there.
Board of ed business manager, Mariana, right, yes. And Kevin Gervais, obviously, the executive to that as well. Any questions for Bob?
I think I completely don't understand this at all.
Well, the bottom line is, we have a debt we have to pay, and this is how we're figuring out how to pay it.
Yeah, so if I look at appendix three.
Okay.
And I look at an asset return rate of 6.5%,
Okay.
Then in 2024, we have to pay in $745,000.
Correct.
If the return is half of that, about 3.5%, then we have to contribute an additional $36,000.
Well, these are all projections, so we
I understand.
Yeah, that would be, yes.
But if we, if we have about half the return on investment, we pay $36,000 more.
Correct.
If we have zero, which is 6% less than return on investment, we have to pay $238,000 more.
Correct.
So I don't understand, 3% less is 36K, and then 3% less than that is 236.
Because you would have no income at all coming from the return on assets. And then it's also projected out over 20 years to catch up.
I understand that I don't understand.
Well, the thing that I have learned attending these meetings is, these are people whose lives, you know, that's, this is what their job was, finance, the world of finance, and actuaries and so forth like that, and fiducients, you know. And the one thing I have learned is that, or one thing I am for sure, is our money is well taken care of. They're cautious, but not to the point of being over cautious, which is why, you know, and prior to last year, we were over 100% funded in our, now we're down a little bit now, but we're still, we've gone from the low of 25 back up to 27. So they're
And we'll smooth that out over five years, or 10 years, whatever we decide.
You know, the thing is, they're being, the nice thing is, is they've been very proactive to make sure, and with the expertise of them, and the actuary and fiduciant, they're making sure that they don't wait too long to act, because there are still some towns that are doing the, are up at 7%, which
Even higher, some are even higher.
Some are even higher than that. That's dangerous at this point in time. We've already taken that to say, no, last year, we probably could have done another set year at 7.
10 years ago, they were 8 and 9%.
Oh, and that's why some towns had, you know, they were at a high rate, and then within a couple of years, they're down to nothing. This was observed by the pension committee, who, pension board, who is keeping a close eye on that and making sure that
Denise was involved in something like that in West Hartford.
West Hartford, yeah. And that's what, that's
They were fully funded, and then the discount rate wasn't lowered and
No, and they left it where it is, and that's why, you know, you know, they'll be looking at that to make sure that, you look at places like Norwich, which had to take out a $75 million bond to fund their pension system. We don't have to do that. And here again, you know, we have a few people this year and so forth, but it's not as if like we're going to have a massive exodus to hit this really hard anytime soon.
The only thing taking bonds out does is fix your cost for the number of years of the bond.
Yeah.
You still have to pay the current.
No, that's, that's just it, you're, the cannon's being kicked very far down the road, and this is why they're doing that. And
So, just trying to understand this. In 2022, what was our asset return? Was it the 6.5, the 3.5, or the 0? Like, what did we do?
These are just projections. I'd have to, we'd have to look at the actuarial study, and that was done on January 1, 2022. So we'll be doing another one January 1, 2024, that will show the return on the assets.
Okay, so basically, just so I understand this, you're just kind of forecasting what these numbers should be?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. By looking at the market and the amount of people who are going to be retiring and what you want to
It's all part of the actuarial study.
Okay, all right. I got it now.
And then we use this, the direct, the defined, what do you call it, the directive to come up with budget numbers based on the last actuarial study.
And the actuary, actuarial study, I guess
Was up through 20
Maybe, you can try to explain this. What are the components that they look at in the actuary?
The same thing. They look at number of employees, the ages, how long they've worked for, they do retirement projections.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where the fiduciant looks at what you have for funds and how best to invest.
Right. They look for the best return on your investments.
Which is
And security.
Exactly, and security, which is good because you've got two different groups looking at, at the, at your
And they don't hold the cash. All they do is make the recommendations.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So this was a, you know, like I said, it took a few meetings to really start to get a feel for what is being done.
Well, I think hiring fiduciant, they were hired just before I got on the board.
Yeah, that's been
That was a good, good decision.
Yeah, a very good move on our part, or the town's part, or the pension board's part. You know, they, I will say, they are very concerned to make sure that we keep our pension fund funded at the appropriate level so that they'll never have to come back and go, oops, or anything like that.
Well, they're going to tell you, but
Yeah.
You have to vote it.
Right, we have to vote it, but, yeah, they'll come back. But anyway, but this is the update they wanted to give us, bring us. And I think we even, in the ordinance we passed, where we established that board, it said that they would make a yearly presentation.
Annual presentation. That's great.
One more question.
Sure.
Sorry, just trying to get my head around
Yes.
I am not a money person.
Yeah.
Okay. The fiduciant, so what they do then is, they're the one who determine how you want to invest the money? Is that
Yes.
Okay, got it.
And then they bring the, their recommendations to the board, and the board votes on it.
And the really impressive thing here is, when they bring those recommendations, it would not be, for instance, a stockbroker telling me, why don't you do this?
No.
I don't have the background. They're telling the people who have an intense, very good background.
They even watch who's managing the money at the investment firms, and if someone leaves or quits, that puts a red flag up, and
Yeah.
I think that's what happened with the one that's on watch right now.
Well, yeah, the fiduciary board, you get, you get it, and you see a little red flag, and they explain why. There's a flag against this, this person group. So, you know, you know, we have to pay for these people, but they are, we have the best possible, not only at the board level overlooking this, but fiduciant and actuary is doing it too. So, you know, I think we're in really very good shape.
Yeah, the pension plan's in good shape.
Yeah, very much so. And for him to say that, you know it's in good shape, because, yeah.
Yeah. I've seen good ones, I've seen bad ones.
Oh, sure.
I bonded pension plans, so I
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Curry? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Nice to meet everyone. If anyone has questions, feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I remember the first couple I sat in on. And at that time, the first selectman was a voting member, and it's like, what, okay, I'll vote, but I, you know, you know, and, you know, these are people who all their lives have been in finance and so forth, and we lost it. And Bob came on last year when one fellow had retired and moved to Florida. So, so we just hit the ground running because there's so many good people out there with that background. So anyway, okay, moving on, we'll go back to the other thing, discussion of possible action. We, you know, there was no one here to comment on them. We've talked about the fire marshal permit inspection fees, so we can proceed with, if no one has any more comments, with the two, well, the fire marshal one first, so.
Sure. Resolve to enact the ordinance entitled Ordinance Prescribing Fees for Fire Marshal Permits and Inspections, presented at the public hearing before the Board of Selectmen on April 19, 2023. The effective date of the ordinance shall be 10 days after publication of the notice of its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, cautions, and now the building one.
Okay. Resolve to adopt the amendment of the ordinance entitled Ordinance Prescribing Fees for Building and Demolition Permits, Town Ordinance, Chapter 150.01.015, presented at the public hearing before the Board of Selectmen on April 19, 2023. The effective date of the ordinance shall be 10 days after publication of the notice of its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, cautions, and say, Eric, you're all set to go.
Thank you.
But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next thing, update on the Dominion building. Wheezy, Mary Louise, but everyone called her Wheezy, has left Dominion. So Mike O'Connor, who was basically the head of Millstone Dominion, the plant over there, and I have been in discussions, he's going, because they didn't replace her position, so we're going to be setting up a meeting with the town and the people from Dominion regarding the building. What I was hoping to do is to be able to get permission from Dominion to do a Level 1 test, which would get, apply for Brownfield Grant, so we could, you know, do, you know, test the site for, you know, the initial one. They're a little hesitant to do that, so we have to work on that. They'd like for us to just take control of the building. We would still, at that time, be eligible for the Phase 1 and then the cleanup afterwards. The contaminants inside the building are easy to do. We know there's, like, any building of that age, there's going to be some lead paint, and there's going to be some asbestos in there. So we know that has to be remediated in any building of that, and the building really can't be repurposed. There's photos from the 70s of, and they didn't even have them, but Bill Shear was able to get some aerial photos of transformers in the back behind the building, transformers like PCB. So there's probably some contaminants in there. PCBs do not spread, they stay where they are when they go into the ground. They don't go down or out, but apparently, they are expensive to remove and destroy, so we wouldn't know until that point in time. So that's, we'll work on that when I talk to them, because I have heard, especially after, you know, with the SIF building, people enjoy having SIF, but the building there and the proposed building at the corner of Main Street and Baptist, I've heard more comments from members of the community, they'd like, you know, we should keep that facility, because if Dominion takes it, they'll sell it to a developer, and, you know, we have very little control outside of what zoning rates we have as to what goes there. If we kept it, we could look at a few variants as to what we could do. So, yeah, Charette, they got a little backed up with stuff, but they're going to be trying to come up with some artist concepts of what it would be, as if the town eventually put a building in there, probably leased it out with some public bathrooms, possibly an overlook over the train tracks out into the bay, and what, you know, a couple versions of that, or what would happen if the town turned around and sold it. But that's a problem, because talking with town attorney, if we take the building from Dominion, they get a tax break on it, and if we, which means we can't turn around and flip it and sell it for a profit, because that violates the reason, the manner which they gave it to us. So that'd be a bit of a problem. But that's, I'm hoping by probably right, right around middle of next month, have something to show and actually describe, and, you know, get the town's input on to, do we keep this, or do we turn it back to Dominion? My feeling is, right now, if we take it, we can clean up, it'll be about a three to five-year process to do that between the two, Brownfield Grants and remediating it. But those are some of the things that, you know, we'll be able to present. But those are some of the things that, you know, we'll be able to present. I think I'm along with that now too. I mean, a year ago, not so much, but now considering that's the last area in that strip along Main Street by the, with the Playhouse across the street there, you actually have a view of the bay. So, something I'd like to explore a little bit more. Any questions? I mean, that's real, I mean, I don't know what, we don't have a date for the Dominion meeting yet.
So, just a question with Yale Sharet. So, I would hope that they are examining the various scenarios of us owning it and what it would be.
Oh, no, they, they're developing.
Development and what that ideal or better development would look like. So, we're not boxing ourselves.
One would be, they're going to come up with a few options for us if we kept it. A building that we could lease.
Right.
It could be, you know, a restaurant or something like that. And with public bathrooms, I emphasize public bathrooms. The other one would be, just make it into a park with public bathrooms, but then we'd have to maintain those if it was ours. And then another would be, it's ours, but we, then we basically give it a long-term lease to someone who could possibly build a building there, a developer, but to our standards, not, you know, and so forth. So, those are the three things we're coming up with. As I said, the last meeting I had, and it was about a month, a little over a month ago, they, as I'm doing this, they're showing me what a concept of what, you know, they're basically, and it's really just, it looked better when it was there, that's for sure. But that's where they were looking. So, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
I was going to say, what I think I would like to see is, is if we did, if somebody else took that property, what the tax value to the town would be if they built, you know, whatever something comparable would be. If we could sell it, it sounds like you're saying whatever Dominion sells it to us for, we can only sell it for that same amount?
No, no, there are some restrictions on it. I mean, there's a, you have to hold it for a certain length of time before you can do it.
Okay, so if we, if we know what the tax value of the property is, what the sales value of the property is, if we keep it ourself, what the expense of that would be? And then if we leased it, leased it, what the possible revenue from that would be?
They are, most, pretty much all that is being done. It's going to be done when we, when we come back with a proposal.
So, I think that's the four things that we would have to see to, to make an intelligent decision.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, I don't know what the tax value, you know, it'd probably be, probably about 30,000 or 40,000, but we, we don't have it now. And we, but well, those are good questions.
But we're wrestling with, we're wrestling with our budget every year. So, to have that extra 30,000 a year is a national extra 30,000 a year, as opposed to an additional 30,000 a year of expense.
Well, I don't think that would, you know, here again, I think that's why we'll have, we have the option, we'll look at the options.
Yeah, so as I said, we have three values, or those four values. I think that would make our decision easier.
Oh, and the communities, because I think we need to look them way out too, so.
And there will be a public discussion.
Yeah.
Once the Sharet is ready to be shared.
Right.
So, that'll help, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, get that information out there.
Quick question, Level 1 test, what does that intend?
That just identify, identifying where the contaminants are. And then the Level 2 basically identifies the amount and you start to clean up with that.
Thank you.
I guess, you know, the issue is, you know, you really need to go through the stages because you don't know.
No, exactly.
Precisely, you have an idea, but until you do the testing, you really don't know.
No, no. You know, some, I've heard some people say that, oh, there's, there's a box with the results of a test that was done and it's totally cleaned. Well, okay, but nobody knows where the box is. And here again, one of the things, I know there's been a Level 1 test done at one point in time. And then as I was talking about that, the fellow here, Sharet, said, well, was it in the last year? Because if it hasn't been, it doesn't count. So, I said, okay, no, it hasn't been the last year.
Test any current.
But, you know, I know there's a lot of desire to, you know, keep that, if possible, to something that could benefit the town and from all aspects, you know, a revenue source as well as keeping it there. So, we'll explore that. Moving on, we've already had the presentation by the Pension Board and Mr. Curry. And then moving on, I've been, you know, regarding to the change in town hall office hours. Over the last few months, I've, you know, actually probably since last summer, started looking at the possibility of extending the hours during the week, Monday through Thursday, and then closing a little earlier on Friday. Because frequently, and I mean almost daily, people come in about five or four. They left work, they need to get a birth certificate, they have to try to resolve a tax matter or something in the assessor's office. It's not uncommon at all. So, the proposal, I've, I've worked with the union on this, labor attorney and so forth. And Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, it's an eight-and-a-half-hour day. And there's already a memorandum of understanding in place to be signed if it's, if we do this. That would mean that they would not get, because anything right now, according to their contract, anything over eight hours during the course of a day is overtime. That would change to eight and a half, anything over eight and a half. And Friday would be from 8:00 AM to 11:30, which is three and a half hours. It maintains the 37 and a half work we have in effect. And, you know, and then I explained that too. Friday afternoons, we've looked, the summer's coming, Friday afternoons are very quiet around here. Friday mornings, there's still some people coming in. Contractors, especially contractors, are always in earlier in the morning, usually to get things done and get moving and so forth like that. And same thing, I talked to the department heads over at Parks and Rec. It would not affect the library because that's a whole separate entity. They're not town employees. The Senior Center and Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec is very comfortable with doing this. The Senior Center, they'll still be open till 4:00. And they're talking about possibly, you know, obviously, they could opt and say, no, we'll stay on the same schedule. Or they have two aides, our two admin assistants over there, you know, they could alternate weeks or something like that. But that would be for the Senior Center Director to decide. So far, very favorable by the town employees that it would affect, would not affect, obviously, the people in Public Works in the fields, fire, police, or anything like that, or dispatch. I also included a list, I also had, thank you, Sue. She did some research for me this week on what other town halls do. And you can see, you know, there are some that open at nine, there's some 8:00 to 4:30, 9:00 to 4:00. Ledyard does 7:30 to 4:45, Monday through Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, Monday through Thursday. And then they have one night they're open till 6:00. Yeah.
Not Salem, I think, yeah.
Yeah, but Ledyard has, but I talked to Fred, I talked to a couple of the town hall, the first selectmen that are in Townsville are open till 6:00. And they said, after 5:00, nobody comes in. It's really quiet for that last hour. So, that's why I proposed 8:00 to 5:00. Would there be any savings for that? Yeah, Kevin Gervais, who's at a conference, at an event tonight for some accounting association, he said, yeah, we could probably save $4,000 or $5,000 a year. So, I said, okay, let's not even put that into the equation because it really, not that. So, I think this, due to, obviously, their town hall employees like the ability to leave a little earlier on Friday. And I think we provide a better service to the community because people will be able to come in till 5:00 o'clock, Monday through Thursday.
Would this impact anything with the library?
No, because the library, yeah, not, not all the library. And, you know, one thing too is, for instance, Good Friday, okay, that means the day before, we would close a little early. We close at half-day on the Thursday before that because, you know, so they get the town staff, we get the, it's all spelled out, the MOU as well, as far as that too. We realize that, you know, every couple of years, there might be a day where the last day to pay taxes before the penalty is on a Friday. Tax office can make the adjustment for that day too, you know, that's a rarity. But there has been a lot of comfort and support on this. And when I talked about this with town attorney, I said, no, this is, I could do this, I don't. But I definitely, obviously, I think I would like to have the endorsement and the support of the board before I would take any action on this. Any other questions?
The only problem that I can see is that during the summer, a lot of our summer non-residents but property owners come down, leave work early on Friday from where they work to get down here to conduct some business on Friday. So, I'd like to, I'd like to see this implemented for a time period and then reevaluate. I'd like to see us try it for maybe six months.
Actually, if the resolution I have for you to endorse it covers that. So, you want to have Anne read it? So?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sure. Move to endorse the change in town hall hours to the following. Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Friday from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. The schedule will go into effect on a date to be determined by the First Selectmen. There'll be a minimum of 60 days' notice between the time the adjusted hours are announced and become effective. After implementation of the adjusted hours, the First Selectmen will report to the Board of Selectmen after three months on the preliminary outcome of the change.
Is that your question, Roseanne?
Yes.
I anticipated Roseanne's question.
Nicely, nicely worded there.
Yes.
Not my wording.
Actually, it was my wording. And town attorney didn't even change anything.
Oh, that's good.
And then he said, oh, good.
That's a win.
Yeah, so anyway, any other comments? And just, go ahead, Bill.
Just under comments, I mean, I agree with, I agree with town attorney. It seems to me that this is something that is well within your purview to talk with the department heads and change hours for you to get our approval. I mean, I think verbally, we can say what we think. But now, next time you go to change it, now we're going to have to come in and talk about it again and stuff. And I don't think this takes our approval. I think this is something that can clearly, that the town can maintain its building hours without.
No, I agree. And that's what, but I'd just like to make sure you're.
Yeah, I'm just saying that now, next time it goes to change, it feels like now we're going to be obligated to say yes. We do think that 7:30 is better than 7:00 o'clock. It just seems.
Yeah, but if this works, I think we'll be all right to do that at that point in time. And, and just to, the plan is, at the earliest, will be July 10th. Because if we did it the first week of July, it's the July 4th week. We don't want to do it that week. We'll start the week after that. So, the week of July 10th, provided everything's in place. And we'll obviously make it available, it will be on social media. Every door in the building, as you come in, will say "as of," so people will know. We'll do everything we can to make sure everybody gets proper notification and that, so. Okay, so Anne, move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any further comment?
I just, I agree with you, Bill. But it's, I think, on the other hand, it's good for us to take a look at serving the public. So, so it kind of falls into this little gray area.
It just feels like bureaucracy. It doesn't seem like it's something that we need to get involved in. It just seems like something that, you know, it's.
Right, it's okay. And then I did speak with Kevin and I was glad that, you know, you did explore the various options with department heads and the employees have all been made known.
Yep.
Are in the know as to the suggested time change, hour change. So, so that was good. So, it didn't seem like there was really, you know, there weren't, there weren't many employees against.
I'm in no way opposed to flexible hours and changing the hours on the season. And if there's certain times of year, you need to shift detective collector or whatever else. I mean, it all makes sense.
Right.
It's something you should be able to do without us saying yes or no. That's my opinion.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously? And now we have the notice of the special town meeting because Board of Finance passed all the information thing. So, Anne will read the call.
Sure. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the town of East Lime to be held on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time at the East Lime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to approve a special appropriation from American Recovery Plan Act funds in an amount not to exceed $98,160 for the purchase of the following items currently listed in the FY 2023-24 Capital Plan. Flanders Fire Department, five SCBA cylinders, $7,460. Niantic Fire Department, six CSCBA cylinders, $8,700. Niantic Fire Department, upfitting of engine three, $20,000. Fire Marshal, one set of turnout gear, $5,000. Fire Marshal, two gas meters, $2,000. Public Works, sidewalk repairs, $25,000. Public Works, various roof repairs, $10,000. Public Works, HVAC pump replacements, $20,000. And the total again, $98,160. Number two, to approve the special appropriation of the funds in the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, in the amount of $10,154.10. Of the requested funds, $9,231 will be utilized to cover a portion of the emergency management salaries. And $923.10 is funding for personal protective equipment purchased between 10/1/22 and 9/30/23. Number three, to appropriate and transfer $17,558 from CNRE Fund Revenue Account, 320440405. Connecticut DOT Grants, PD. To account 322540700402, Connecticut DOT Grant Equipment, PD, for the purchase of electronic citation equipment for East Lime Police Department vehicles. And number four, finally, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting dated at East Lime, Connecticut, this 19th day of April, 2023, East Lime Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously? Well, good, we're done with the business part of our meeting. We're, that's a long one. Moving on, ex officios. Bill, I'll start at your end tonight.
Yeah, and Roseanne may remember some of this back in 112 years ago when I was the chairman of the zoning board. There was a proposal to the Planning Commission from the zoning board that read, "Application of East Lime Zoning Commission for Text Amendment to amend Section 9CB Commercial District by modifying Section 9.2.3 Mixed Use in Section 25.5 Table Minimum Controls of Specific Special Permits." Doesn't say anything, right? I mean, if you're not real familiar with the regs, it's just a kind of vegetable soup. So, the Planning Commission talked about it and basically didn't understand what was coming before them. Staff kind of said that there may have been other ways that things could have been done and things like that. I went back and looked at the zoning minutes from the February 17th meeting, and the motion for Mr. Pack was specific about what this amendment was supposed to do. So, back in the day, what we used to do was when the zoning commission made a motion or a recommendation to the Planning Commission, they included a little blurb about why they did what they did. And it seems like we've got away from that. It seems like we're not explaining to each other why we're making the. So, so this amendment was, or this motion was not passed. And now it's got to basically go back and they're going to rehash it out and things like that. So, that's my long, boring story to say. I think maybe we got to go back to the days where the different commissions would get a little more explanation as to why they're doing what they're doing.
Did you ever figure out what it was?
Yeah, as I say, if I, if I read this, it comes down to, the purpose of the change is to avoid tearing down old buildings in downtown to avoid them being replaced with mixed use. So, they want to not rip down two small buildings, old buildings, and put up a big new thing.
Basically, keep it in the same footprint.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so that's what all this was trying to do.
That does make sense.
But it wasn't clearly communicated.
Okay.
So, it's just the communications. It's just, it's, you know, it's, it's putting some words down or sending a representative so that it can, can be explained. So, that's my ex officio report is that I think, and maybe that's not appropriate, ex officio, I don't know if it is or not, I still said it. I think we need to go back to give them a little more explanation.
Did you communicate that to anybody on?
Unfortunately, I read this after that motion, after that was done.
Okay.
So, after the meeting was over, in front of everybody, I had a conversation with Gary. And I can't speak to the commission because it gets into the whole, you know, it's a public hearing and you're doing things that you can't do. So, I, I had to limit how much I said. But I did talk to Gary and, and explain to him and told him that maybe him and Bill have to get together and kind of make sure that things come across a little clearer. That's all.
Okay. Anne? Ann?
Okay, let's see. Um, I went, Inland Wetlands was canceled, and then I went to, for zoning on April thirteenth, and there was a public hearing on, um, where is it? The, the Main Street, um, on Baptist Street, um, Niantic, and that public hearing was continued until tomorrow, uh, April twentieth. So, they, they did not make a decision, I guess the application was not signed. That was kind of the, um, a lot of people did show up, uh, from the public, um, and the large majority of them seemed to be against the, um, uh, construction. Um, so that was the one thing. And then the other thing was, was a proposed text amendment for the Niantic Bay Playhouse to allow them to sell alcohol, um, before and after an intermission, uh, at their events, and, and that was unanimously approved. And that's really about it.
Okay. Ann?
Uh, nothing for me.
Okay, Ann?
Nothing.
Roseanne?
I guess it's been a pretty light month.
Okay.
So, I'll continue the trend and just say that zoning meets tomorrow night, in which they will continue the public hearing, and they expect that there's going to, from the talk I hear around town, I think that there's going to be quite a few people that appear again, uh, to offer their opinions.
Okay. First selectman's report, okay, I don't know if I remember, but we have come to an agreement with the dispatchers on a contract, it'll be three years, and, uh, we'll be finishing up, uh, within the next couple of weeks. Both sides have indicated they're happy with it, the, uh, the agreement as drafted by our labor attorney, so it just means we have to get together to sign that probably over the next couple of weeks. Uh, today at the Council of Government, I was talking to Rob Ruhl, and I was telling him about, you know, some of the concerns I've gotten from some members in this part of town and along the beaches about the proposed Waterford Data Center. His recommendation, and, you know, we, we talked, he's willing to come over at some point, and I said probably it'd be better after, uh, after the budget's done, that we have a little bit more time, to do a presentation on, on this data center, some specificity of it, see, 'cause he realized, you know, obviously, we don't have any input into it, but he feels, you know, since, you know, we're close and so forth like that, he'd like to make sure he gives a thorough, you know, presentation of the project to the people in the ser- you know, people in town that might like it, so we'll work on, on that, getting that done. We talked in the past about the, uh, the project for East Patagansett Road, Alex Close brought it to us for the sidewalk and road improvements there. That had low tip endorsements, it has been ranked number one and forwarded by, uh, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments today. We were number one, and Preston was number two with their project, so we're looking for two out of three steps, we've made it through, and we're number one, moving into getting a third one approved, so let's hope that gets done. There's been some question about if, uh, there's been a recording or a tape made or of, of a town meeting or public hearing, whether it needs to be, you know, whether a board or commission can choose not to have it played on, uh, either the public access channel or YouTube. The answer from Town Attorney and from, uh, Freedom of Information is no. If we make it, it's public and it's to be played, so that is gonna be done. One other interesting thing, a couple of things that Southeast Council, uh, Council of Government meeting today, a couple years ago, they combined arts, uh, culture, and tourism all into one, figuring they'd get more money. It hasn't worked out that way. Uh, they report today, Maine puts eighteen million dollars into these things, Rhode Island, eleven million, Connecticut, six point five million, so that's less now than last year. And one of the things they pointed out is, this state or basically the area gets a three-dollar return on every dollar they spend for these three things, 'cause it brings people to the area, so they're trying very hard to go back to lobby, but as you saw, um, you know, or as they pointed out, that was reduced in the appropriations bill that came out yesterday, which I send everybody, I cut and paste, the paste didn't look as good, but, but the last line is here.
We got it, we got it.
Right, right now, it's, well, um, that, Doc, we came out, about that page. ECS right now, the Appropriations Committee is recommending ECS be restored to, uh, the former level, so that'd be an extra two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue. Kevin, like I said, is going to be looking to see if, it's over two-hundred-and-seventy pages, that document that they released, so he's gonna be looking tomorrow to see what other things there are piled or anything, to see if maybe we've got some money there. But a little bit of good news there. Route one sixty-one corridor study, they're gonna be having a, uh, presentation at the middle school on the twenty-seventh, a week from tomorrow, at six PM in the middle school auditorium slash, uh, multipurpose room. Uh, should be very interesting, the first one was really good. They'll show some artist concepts of, uh, the boardwalk that'll, they're, they like to put near Gordon Pond and extend the sidewalks, it's, um, and, and again, this is separate from the Mammoth Project going on right now up there. You see daily work being done right now. If you're going north on one sixty-one, north of Industrial Park Road, they're cutting way back into the, the embankment on the right-hand side, um, where they're gonna be moving the poles over, that'll allow them also to widen the road. Uh, you can see there's, actually, you can see now where the exit ramp is gonna come off across from Burger King, and you can see what they're doing up by the old, uh, driving range, so work is getting done up there. The weather has allowed them to get well ahead of schedule, so maybe four and a half, instead of four and a half years, it'll be four years and three months, so, I don't know, but it, that's going on. They're looking at trying early next month to give a presentation first to the business owners in that strip that are affected, so they can give them as much information as possible, followed that by a, a presentation to the public. Their website is, uh, up and running right now. If people come into town hall, they, they can just, you know, scan the barcode, um, and go to, you know, the website and, uh, get all the information from that, so they've been very, you know, this project seems like it's as well organized as possible. Next Monday, the twenty-fourth, at the East Lime High School Auditorium, at seven PM, is the, uh, the public hearing on the budget. Um, the, it's a Board of Finance meeting, but that's where they'll be, hear comments on the proposed budget, and after which, they'll make any final adjustments to the budget and adopt the one they'll send forward to referendum. Uh, and the town meeting on the eighth, we did that last time. Rescue, last night in Osagachi Hills, um, I got the thing about search and rescue, I waited about five minutes, called dispatch, and they go, "Yes, some people are lost up there, they have their cell phones." So, in the dark, Chris Taylor, Jimmy Barone, Dave Cavington, Forrest Andrews, Eric Quinn, who was here, Jim Keegan, John McDonald, and Ben Rossecott went up in the hills and helped locate these people and get them out. This is what, a really good job by our firefighters and our dispatchers for keeping these people on the phone and to keep them relaxed, you know, "Where are you?" And, you know, probably homing in on the phone signal is a way to, to find out where they are, to do that and, and get the help to them, so, uh, you won't see anything in the paper about it, but a very nice, uh, job by our dispatchers and our, and our firemen last night. Uh, okay, and finally, uh, East Lime beat Waterford nine-to-nothing in baseball tonight, and Mr. Ruhl, Mr. Ruhl, if you're watching, we made a bet today, you owe me lunch. So, anyway. And that's it, uh, no public comment, selectman's response, uh, we just have like a two-minute on executive session for, uh, Osagachi Hills and Hathaway property.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I just wanna confirm that you said that, so any recording or video that's done can be put up on?
It will be put up on, it's going, yeah, because Mike Mines did that, and he was told, the zoning board did not wanna have that, that's not their option.
That's not their, okay, 'cause I didn't go in tomorrow, I just wanna make sure I tell them.
Yeah, FOIA, FOIA is very specific of that, in our, in our opinion from.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so, okay.
Everyone's up?
Yep.
Okay. Move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters, East Line Land Trust, Osagachi Hills. The board is entering into executive session at eight oh one PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're in executive session, we'll take a few minutes for Patrick to, and Sue to wrap up their stuff, and.
The board had entered into executive session at eight oh one PM, and we returned at eight thirteen PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay.
And, um, I will move to adjourn the regular meeting of April fifth, 2023, at eight thirteen